Workshop on Public Works Contracting with the City of Oshkosh. So I will turn this over to James Robbie.
All right, thank you Mayor. With us tonight, we have Ben Jordan, who's the Program Director for the University of Wisconsin-Madison Department of Engineering and Professional Development. Ben teaches and develops continuing education courses for civil engineers and public works professionals. He's also the Director of the Wisconsin Transportation Information Center, providing training and technical assistance to county highway departments, town road departments, city and village public works departments. Ben has over 30 years of experience in civil engineering and public works, and prior to joining UW-Madison, has served as a Public Works Director and Village Engineer. He obtained his Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from University of Illinois or Bana-Champaign, and is a licensed PE in the state of Illinois. Ben is going to take lead on the presentation workshop. As usual with workshops, you know, this is kind of laid back, you know, feel free to ask questions whenever you have them, you know, don't hold back, you know, I'd hate for you to forget to ask something later on because you held back, so don't hold back, you know, fire them away as you get them. City Manager and I will interject things as they, you know, relate specifically to how we do things here in Oshkosh, as it relates to how Ben is talking a bit more global in the industry side of things. So with that, I think everybody should have a copy of the presentation as well, if you want to take some notes on things. Also, in your handout packet, is a kind of an example, geotechnical investigation policy. Ben, I believe you said that was from the City of Houston, Texas?
That was some information that I pulled out from their policy.
Okay.
It's excerpt from the policy.
So we'll get into-
As an example.
Yeah, we'll get into that a little bit more, but it was just some additional information that, you know, we wanted you to have, and, you know, as we get through some of that stuff, we will certainly talk about how some of the things we do here in Oshkosh compare to some of those things.
Before we start, let's introduce each one, go around the table, make introductions-
Oh, certainly, sorry.
...to do that. We'll sit down with you.
James Robbie, Director of Public Works for the City of Oshkosh.
Lori Palmieri, Oshkosh Common Council.
Steve Evans with the council.
Steve Cummings, Mayor.
Matt Muggerower, Council.
Mark Roloff, City Manager.
Jake Crowsey, Council.
Ben Jordan, University of Wisconsin.
Thank you, sorry about that. So I think I will turn it over to Ben at this point, and let him get started.
Okay. When James and I started talking about this a few months ago, when we were planning this, I think the context of it was that there were a lot of questions about change orders, about project budgets, about cost estimates. I'm sure these aren't all the questions, but I threw a few up there. You know, basic stuff, what's a change order? What causes change orders? What can we do to avoid them? Do they always have to cost more, right? Seems like we have changes to go up in price, but what happens? Are there things where we save money? You know, how do we avoid them? Why are bid prices so much different than budget estimates sometimes? And there was kind of an element of, well, who's responsible for these things? You know, and is there recourse on some of these things? So that's kind of some of the context of the questions, as I understood it. I hope that you'll kind of jump in with questions as we go along. What I'm going to do to start out, or what I plan to do, is first kind of do a little bit of background, I think will help as we answer those questions, or answer some of those questions. And there's a few definitions. One of the things that we hear about when we talk about change orders, when we talk about changes in contracts, is a change in scope. We might hear about that with a consultant contract, we might hear about that with a construction contract. A change in scope, a scope of work, first of all, is a description of, a complete description of the work. It's, you know, things that are going to be performed under a particular contract, and so a good, effective scope does a good job of anticipating everything that may be part of a project. One of the issues we have when we're putting a project together, is we have limited information, and the further out we are from a project, and we'll talk about CIP plan versus design, we're trying to put together a scope based on relatively limited information. And so we'll talk about that a little bit further. So having complete scope of work descriptions that are clear is helpful. Changes in scope of work, there's a lot of different definitions of what scope of work is, and what a change in scope of work is. I threw a federal definition up there from Federal Highway Administration, which is, a change in scope is altering the character of the work so that differs materially from the original contract, or a major item of work is increased or decreased more than 25 percent. So we have changes in contracts that are not changes in scope, and we'll talk about that a little bit more as well. Two types of contracts you deal with for construction. Most of what you see, when I was looking back at bid tabulations that are on your website, most of what you see come before you are unit price contracts. In a unit price contract, which is common for street work, it's common for utility underground work, so most of the things we're doing as a municipality, when we're doing the design, we lay out a list of all of the contract items that are involved in the complete construction of this contract. The contractor is going to bid a unit price for each of those items, we're going to have a quantity for each of those items, and we'll show an example of that. So work's paid by multiplying the unit price by the number of units of work that are done, and you pay for the actual quantities that are constructed, right? So when you're getting a bid in, and you're being asked to authorize a contract, you're doing that based on an estimate of the quantities. When the work is, as the work progresses, the staff or the consultant, whoever's observing the project, is measuring quantities, actual quantities. And then we're totaling up actual quantities, and the payment is based on the actual quantity, not the bid quantity, unless there was an agreement to use the bid amount, the bid quantity as the measured quantity, which sometimes happens. Plus on this is, if you use less of an item than you anticipated in the original estimate, you save money, all right? And some of those you may never hear about, because if it's a small change, does that go to council?
Yeah, the way, I think everyone's familiar, but, you know, the way the municipal code is written, reductions in cost or change orders up to $25,000 that do not exceed 15 percent and do not exceed the budget, you know, are administratively approved. And that was one thing, I think, earlier this year, we had provided a report for all of the change orders that had been administratively approved in 2017.
And so then, on the flip side, if the quantity of work is higher than what was estimated, then you're going to pay for that higher amount. So if the units of the work are more than what was originally anticipated, you pay that larger amount. So as the owner of this infrastructure, you are assuming some risk there. The advantage, and, you know, sometimes it's hard to tell how much of these advantages are textbook advantages, and how much are real advantages, because we're not inside the head of the contractor who's bidding on this, and they're pretty close to the vest about their thinking about how they're bidding things. But at least in theory, they should be able to reduce the contingencies they build into their prices, because they know that if this quantity changes, as long as it's an item that is in the contract, there's a unit price for that item, they're going to be paid based on the work that they do. So they have less risk, at least theoretically, than they would in a lump sum project, which we'll talk about in a minute.
Ben, when you refer to a contingency in this case, that's more of a, how they work behind the scenes.
That would be internal to the-
They don't bid a contingency amount.
It would not be, typically in a unit price contract, there is not a contingency in the bid, no. But when you're a contractor, and you're thinking about, you know, you're thinking about bidding, you're thinking about covering your cost of your labor, your cost of your materials, your cost of your equipment, your cost of your fuel, your overhead, your profit, and you're thinking about risk, all right? So somewhere in all of that, as you're putting your bid together, you have to price risk. And, you know-
Do they price the risk of underbidding?
Well, you know, figuring out how contractors bid is, I guess if I could really figure that out, I'd go to work for someone and figure out how to win all the jobs. But it can be so variable, because it can depend on just the bid climate at that time. I can know that my competitors do not have a lot of work, and they're going to be hungry for work. And so I know if I want that job, I may need to take less profit. I may decide to take a risk without pricing it in. There may be another time when, you know, I know that others have a lot of work, I don't think it's going to be as competitive environment, and I may price a little bit higher. And you see variations for the same types of projects from one year to another, that don't, you can't always look at them and go, well, there was a cost of living increase of 2 percent between last year and this year, and that corresponds. You know, you could see a similar project be 15 percent more this year than last year. And some of it may have to do with some of those intangible or invisible factors. So it's a little bit challenging to answer some of those questions.
And that's one of the things, as we talked about last week at the budget workshop, you know, there's a lot of work going on in the southeast part of the state right now, that it is pulling some of our contractors, you know, so that's some of the things, as Ben mentions, that, you know, others are weighing it. So, all right, you know, I know these two guys that usually bid on Oshkosh projects are tied up with all their crews down south, so they're not going to submit a bid, so it might factor in. And we've seen contractors where, you know, they had absolutely no work, so they bid a project at basically almost at cost, so they don't, you know, have other costs such as unemployment and things like that, that they have to shell out, or find something for their people to do. So that's a bit of the environment of bidding that's a real challenge to try to guess at sometimes.
Right, and in an economy like we had several, you know, a number of years ago, where contractors were very aggressively looking for work, you know, if you have a quality crew and you want to keep them together so that you're in a position to get more work later, you might bid a job at cost, just to keep your operation running and to keep your skilled people working on projects for you. You know, there are cases where that happens.
There's another example, when we were doing the James Road Stormwater Detention Pond, that contractor took advantage of the fact that somebody was willing to pay him for the fill for the Buttermore Causeway.
That was actually the Tippler Detention Basin.
It was Tippler?
Yeah. James Road, we hauled most of that material over to Clark Hill off-road, we used off-road trucks, but it was a Tippler detention basin.
I'm sorry, it was Tippler. So they bid what would probably be about 20 cents to the dollar of what they would normally charge, because we were paying them to haul it off, and somebody was paying them to haul it to their site. They got paid on both ends, so they lowered the unit cost for us. So that's one of those things that you can't even, it was below market, it was a below-market price, because they were getting paid to get rid of it. Usually, a contractor has to pay to get rid of fill with that, in this case, they were getting paid to do it. So those little quirky things always come up that you just don't know about, and-
We had a period of time where we did try to load as many stormwater projects like that in, because we knew the DOT was paying contractors to find fill, so we're like, oh, well, okay, if we can push a couple more of these projects out and get, you know, projects done for a fraction of the cost, we, you know, we did try to take a little bit of advantage of that, knowing the market that the DOT had created when they built the 41 Causeway.
So, just to show some examples, this is just a page out of a DOT unit price contract, and that's just one page of many pages. So the number of work items that it takes to describe a construction contract can be a very, very large number of items. So this is just the first page, and it has kind of, you know, clearing and demolition work, and some pavement removal, some asphalt removal, concrete sidewalk removal, excavation, aggregate base course, the asphalt base and asphalt surface. So it's just a piece of a construction contract that you see there. So every one of those items is defined, there's a specification written, or there's a standard specification, in the state's case, in the state specification book, that is referenced to that particular description. There's a unit of measure, you know, in these cases, some things are each, some things are by the ton, some things are by the linear foot, some things are by the square yard. There's all kinds of different types of measurement. So this is how you describe a project in a unit price contract. And this is the detailed engineering that goes on in the design phase, all right? This is not something that would be happening at the CIP plan phase five years out. This would be happening much closer when you're doing the detailed design work. To kind of translate that to an Oshkosh example, this is just, again, just a page out of a bid tabulation for an Oshkosh project. And this just comes off of the website where those are posted, and this is just one page. You see probably, what, 12, 13 items there, and that's not the whole project. This was a fairly simple project, I think, but there's still a few pages of items to describe it. Again, in the design, we identify the items of work, we identify how they're going to be measured, we identify a quantity of work that we estimate. And then the contractor comes in, in his bid, and assigns a unit price, and then takes that unit price for each item, multiplies it by the quantity that we've estimated in the design, and that's the column, the product of that is the column you see that says extension, and then that column is added up, and you see at the bottom, the total amount of that work. And so that's how a unit price contract works. Again, when we actually do the work, we're going to, when the contractor actually does the work, we're going to be measuring those quantities, the actual quantities of work, and we're going to be, they're going to be billing, we're going to be paying based on what is actually constructed, not the estimated amounts. Lump sum contracts are different. A lump sum contract, you're going to get, and there's some variations, and there's some hybrids of these things, but in a pure lump sum contract, you're going to have a set of specifications, a description of the work, and the contractor's going to give you one price that's going to cover all of the work complete, all right? So one, it says one single aggregate price to undertake the work and cover all risks. Now, in reality, yes, the contractor's taking on more risk, but I think we know, you don't have as many lump sum contracts, but you know from having lump sum contracts that you still have change orders on lump sum contracts. Theoretically, the contractor may put a higher markup, he's going to build in more contingency. And as was mentioned earlier, sometimes on these types of contracts, there may actually be a line item for contingency with a lump sum contract. So, you know, this is just an example, and this was actually a lump sum item in one of your contracts, which was kind of a large lump sum item within a contract that had some unit prices as well. But this is just a brief description, which would also have a specification behind it in much more detail, that describes a lift station and a park shelter.
This was Mary Jewel Park.
And so this bid did have some unit price items, but it had this large multimillion, it was a million dollars.
The building itself was one lump sum item, then there was some sewer work and things like that, that were bid as unit prices. So that Mary Jewel, you know, project was kind of a hybrid, as Ben was mentioning, where you've got a single big lump sum item, but you also have some unit price items mixed in with the project.
And so, one of the challenges here, while you don't put out a bid package that has all of those items listed and has quantities listed, the contractor does all that quantity take off, you still need to have a very good handle on what all those items of work are. You need to make sure that your specification has described them fully, and you still are doing some estimating to make sure that your project is going to fit within, in the budget, right? So you still have to do estimating, you still have to do some detail of those quantities in your design process. It just doesn't feed into that document. You are also still going to have change orders, because no matter how hard you try, and no matter how experienced you are in a particular type of project, it's almost inevitable that something is not going to be fully described or fully anticipated by the design documents. It's very rare that you're going to have no changes at all. And we'll talk about the reasons you might have changes as we go forward.
In this case, there was a change order, if you recall, because the Plan Commission didn't like the initial design, because the Parks Board had been approving shelters that were pretty basic, and the Plan Commission wanted a fancier one. Well, that was a lump sum.
Oh, is that the one that looks like a Cracker Barrel now?
I hadn't heard that, but okay. I don't think that Cracker Barrel was in the specs, but yes, I think the answer to your question is yes. But the idea was that they put more accoutrements on the building itself.
They put more paint on the pig.
That's another way of putting it.
Tony does a good job of that.
So another- Unless complaints about what?
So just another example, again, this is from one of your bid tabulations, different project. These are lump sum bids, okay? Construction of water plant filtration plant storage facility, complete as specified. Contractor gives us a price for that item, or for that work, okay, complete. And again, there's a set of specifications that go along with this, there's a set of plans that provide all the detail that's behind that description, in order for them to give a firm price for that. All right, so when we look at change orders, when we look at changes to contracts, you know, one of the things that obviously underlies all this, underlies the unit price contract, is an estimate. An estimate of quantities, which multiplied by unit costs, gives you an estimate of cost for the work. At various stages in our process, we're doing estimates. So five years out, we have to do a capital plan estimate. The level of information that we have at that point is pretty low, and we have a large, fairly large number of projects that we're estimating at one time, they're five years out from now. It's a very conceptual estimate. So what you see on this little chart here, which comes, not something I made up, it's the American Association Cost Estimating International, has classes of estimates, based on the amount of engineering that has been done, what the likely range plus and minus is going to be on that cost estimate. You know, when I was a Public Works Director and Village Engineer, and I would have a job, and it got bid, and I would come in at like 1 percent, within 1 percent of my estimate, I just thought I was the smartest guy in the world, right? Then I'd do the next project, and I did all the same things, I thought I did them just as well, and then that project was 12 percent off. Well, what did I do wrong? I didn't do anything wrong, I just, you know, things worked differently on the one than the other. I didn't forget anything, there wasn't, you know, an error, an omission, it's just that, you know, there are changes in the market, there's changes in the competitiveness of the situation. But a lot of times, when we're at that construction phase, the class one that's shown here, we're talking about, you know, anything within, here it talks about negative 10 percent to plus 15 percent, right? And I always thought of it as, if we're within 10 percent of our estimate with that bid, we're really doing pretty well. If we're within 3 percent, we're doing very well. And it's not always because we did something differently on the one where we were within 3 percent. Sometimes it's just market factors that have an impact. So to look at this same thing visually, all right, and I don't know if you like graphs, and I don't know if I like this particular graph that much, actually, but, so this is showing the kind of large, but flat, pink area on the left-hand side, is a classified estimate. Very, very conceptual, and you can see it saying it's, could be as much as 100 percent off. Hard to make decisions on something that could be 100 percent different than your estimate. When we're doing that capital planning, we're probably somewhere in that class four, and so it's saying negative 30 to plus 50, and then actually, the little trapezoid goes down to about negative 20 to plus 20 as you progress along, and I have a little bit more information. So one of the ways that you can reduce that risk and that variation is by having, developing more information in more detail earlier in the planning process. But of course, there's cost associated with that, and you'd be doing that on projects, some of which may not even go into that CIP plan, they may not make the cut for the five years, or, you know, they may go into that plan, and then there may be changes in the plan as you get into that project being two years or three years out, because priorities have changed, regulatory issues have changed, other things may change that plan. So you have to think about how much information, how much level of detail, how much effort do we put into a estimate that's five years out? Pretty typically, we have relatively limited engineering information when we make that estimate. And we'll look at an example that kind of shows that in just a minute. So, are there questions at this point? I know I'm kind of jumping forward, and I don't want to keep you from asking questions. So capital plan cost estimate, what we're going to do in that case is, we're going to look for cost data that we have readily available. We're going to look at costs from recent similar projects. We're going to, if we haven't done recent similar projects, the approach I would take, I'd be looking around at other communities in my same market area, and looking at projects that they had done that were similar. If I don't have any of that data, if it's something we don't do very often, none of our neighbors do it very often, then we start going to things like, there's some nationwide cost books, where they have prices, and then there are adjustment factors based on your location. They're really not the kind of things you want to use ideally as your basis of cost, but sometimes you don't have any other information. So there's people like Building News and RS Means who publish these cost books. So in that initial estimate, we're trying to project five years out what this project is going to cost, with fairly limited information. So you can expect there's going to be some variation as we go forward with that. So let's look at an example. And I first, when I put this together, I was trying to find a project where we could just pull a page out of a plan sheet for a project and give you an example. And quite honestly, even the most simple project, you couldn't take one plan sheet and get a fairly simple example, because they're complex projects. Even a straightforward reconstruction or resurfacing of a street is a fairly complex project. So I kind of cooked a project up here, right? An example project. So we have Example Street, and it's 500 feet long, it's four lanes wide, so it's 48 feet wide, and it's an existing street with curb and gutter, and we're going to replace, five years from now, we're going to replace the concrete pavement, okay? And so we need to do a capital plan estimate for that. How are we going to get that number? A pretty typical approach would be looking at other concrete pavement projects we've done. We look at the total price of those projects, divided by the number of square yards of concrete pavement in the project, and we get a factor. Okay, I looked at a recent project in the bid tabulations that you have online, and it was somewhere in the $60 per square yard range. So I know that this particular Example Street is 500 feet long by 48 feet wide, I multiply 500 by 48, 24,000 square feet, divide by nine to get square yards, there's 2,667 square yards. I multiply it by $60 per square yard, I have a cost estimate of, well, it said $160,020. If I'm putting in the CIP, I'm not going to use that level of precision, because, right, I just told you, I could be 50 percent off. So I call it $160,000. That may be the level of estimating, very often, that you have behind an item that's just coming into the CIP plan at five years out. Because that's the level of information we have, and that's the level of investment in getting the details of that project that we can do at that point.
And that really is very similar to the way, when we're developing the CIP for street reconstruction, or even the asphalt overlay program, that's very much how we're looking at it, is, okay, what's the length, what's the width, you know, is it seven-inch pavement, eight-inch pavement, you know, depending on local arterial, and they were kind of saying, okay, it's this much volume of concrete, and, you know, so we know about what our costs have been running at. So that's really a very, very similar process to what we're doing as we're starting to develop CIP budgets for street projects.
And one of the things that can happen is, and we've found ourselves scrambling in some cases, you may recall that when we did Parkway, East Parkway, a few years ago, that that project was kind of on and off. So we had some fairly good numbers for Parkway, but if you recall, we were actually going to take that out of the CIP and bump up another project, so much so that James and I can't even remember it, because which project we were going to bump. But you may remember, Dan Rylandz wrote something, an article, and then Dan, and I teased Dan afterwards, because Dan was so proud of the fact he wrote this article, and the council changed its mind. Well, what changed council's mind was that Mount Vernon failed. And when Mount Vernon failed, all these dominoes started to come into play. The staff had not put together any estimates for Mount Vernon. So while we had reasonably decent numbers for Parkway, because we had done that exercise that Ben referred to, we had done zero estimating for Mount Vernon. Once we had run a camera through there and realized, we got a problem.
But we almost lost the camera while we were trying to televise the sanitary sewer, the failure was that- The failure was that bad.
So suddenly, we have to come up with a cost estimate. How, what's Mount Vernon going to cost? And at that moment in time, all you can really do is use the approach that Ben says is like, well, we got this much, you know, Mount Vernon's this long and there's so much sewer there, we're going to have to replace the whole thing and we do that with water and et cetera because we know it's not just about the street, it's about everything else. And once we started with the sewer, all the dots started to connect. And that's, sometimes we're just putting that together at a very initial phase because all we have is that the example here is $60 a square yard. So that's kind of the, the background with some of these things, especially when we, when we're a little behind the eight ball in terms of getting capital replacements and then these projects suddenly emerge to the top of the list versus when we were planning project A and all of a sudden we got project B or project C.
And that was one of the challenges with Mount Vernon is it was never in the five-year CIP and all of a sudden, we got to do it next year. You know, so, you know, it bumped a lot of things and we did, we had to try to figure out a way to shuffle all the cards, if you will, and relay everything out to be able to try to fit it in.
So Ben showed you that one chart that had the, he talks about it being five years out. We would like it to be five years out, but sometimes we're doing class five estimating nine months before the project and then you're, you know, then you're moving quickly to class three, class two. We probably jump from class five to class two when a, when a project like that happens because we need to put a number in the budget, we need to have a, we need to have something, but we may still be scrambling to get those together when we have an emerging project. Sorry to interrupt you.
No, no problem. That's what we want. We want to get a good discussion going. So when you get to the design phase, as we talked about, you have a lot more information, you're doing the design, you're getting into the details. You're developing unit cost estimates for each item. You're developing quantity estimates for each item. Again, just like we talked about, you multiply the unit price by the quantity to get the total for each item in your cost estimate. And this is pretty much going to have to rely on your cost database, data that you have for other projects. So even this gets to be a challenge if it's something you never do. That's where with real specialty work, sometimes it can be helpful to engage a consultant who does those type of projects regularly. Because through all of their work on all of those projects in various communities, they have a pretty good knowledge of the cost of those items. So even in this case though, with design, we may be in a position where I'm designing this summer to project what the cost is going to be next spring. Okay? Because there's some lead time to do the design work. Very early in my career and I worked for the Illinois Department of Transportation, if I was out this summer doing, looking at a road and say identifying, we're going to patch and overlay a road. I'm doing an estimate of patching right now. That road is at least going to go through one additional winter and see additional deterioration. So it's, it's going to have some effect on it. So when we did those estimates, we would add 20% to our patching quantities to account for what's going to happen to the road between the time I look at it and the time the contractor actually takes possession of the road to do the work. So you can put some factors in, but it's just that, it's a factor, it's a guess. I don't know if it's going to be a bad winter or a good winter and that could affect my quantities. So even at that point, you're not 100% there. You can have other factors that can change things as well. So we take the same example. Now, there's some things I didn't show you in the, in the five-year CIP estimate because we didn't know about them. Okay? And as we get into design, we go, well, we thought this was straightforward. All we're going to do is replace this concrete pavement. Well, we determined that there's one area where there's some unsuitable subgrade soils. We've seen some, you know, deterioration of drainage structures and we're going to have to do some additional work there. We have some sidewalk that needs to be replaced. We have some curb that needs to be replaced. We're going to have some adjustments of utility structures, all these types of things. And so when you do this estimate for the details of even this very simple example, here's all the P items I came up with. So we've got sidewalk replacement, we've got sign of existing pavement, we've got dollbars in our existing pavement. We've got to remove unsuitable subgrade soil. We've got to provide works on traffic control. We've got to replace a couple driveway aprons in the process of doing the sidewalk. Rebuild some structures, some manholes and catch basins, adjust a catch basin, put pavement marking down. There are all these things that we need to do that are part of the details of building this project. Now, those should be somewhat cooked into that original estimate because when I did that original estimate, I took a similar project and the total of all the items that were in it and divided it by my square yards of concrete pavement. So I should have accounted for those items in that total. But there's, you get into this detail, you may find that this project is a little bit different than the project or projects you used to develop your cost database. And so I take those items, I individually look at costs of specific items and what, what bid prices have been recently. And here are all the items in that simple one-page example. You know, exhumation unsuitable soil, removal of sidewalk, sign of pavement, all the things that we had on that, that last page. Turf restoration, which I don't even know if I showed on the last page because we're going to have to restore, you know, with sod or seed, whatever our standard is in areas we disturb. And I come up with an estimate of $174,148. And what was my conceptual estimate?
160.
160. That's certainly within, when we talked about those classes, you know, it's, it's within that range. You know, did I do something wrong? Did I make a mistake? No, I just had a different level of information, basically, is, is the difference between the two. And of course, I have the advantage that I'm putting an example together. But honestly, when I put this together, I put together that rough example and then I thought about what all these quantities would be, I calculated quantities and I put a number together and I didn't change the number. I didn't go back and make them work. Because if I was going to go back and make them work, I would have made them closer, right? You know, so this is really how the process works. Questions about that?
Pretty much how we do ours.
It, it really is. I mean, that's, you know, as we're getting ready to put a project out for bid, you know, this is one of the last things we're doing because we've got the design done, we've got the specifications done. Now, okay, what's our estimate of, you know, engineer's estimate of construction cost? That's, you know, kind of what you're looking at right here, that detailed level of cost estimating. That's kind of one of the last stages before we go out for bid.
And in some larger projects and when you work with consultants, you'll hear them talk about like doing a 50% estimate and a 90% estimate. So they got half of the, half of the detail done in the, in the design and they'll run another cost estimate, kind of figure out where they're at. Then we get 90% and they'll run another cost estimate. Because you may decide to change the scope of the project if your cost estimate is way over what you budgeted, you may decide not to do some work in order to try to fit into the budget. And so.
And that has happened too.
Right.
Where you brought projects back to us and said that, oh, it's not to go forward with them because of, we didn't get an acceptable bidder.
Yeah.
Within project.
Doesn't happen too often, but.
It, it does happen sometimes at the bidding stage, but you know, as Ben mentioned, you know, you get it, you know, at that 50 to 60% design stage, you're doing another cost estimate, you know, because we may have estimated, you know, a project cost and now we want to see, okay, with, now that we've gotten about halfway there with the design, are we still on track or are we, you know, way over, way under, where are we at? And, you know, we have altered the scope of projects at times because we're like, geez, you know, it's, you know, we're shooting for a little too much here. We got to scale this back because it's just not going to work. You know, and then the 90%, that's when we're, you know, almost done with the design and then we're kind of like, okay, are we still on track? Are we close to where we thought we were at the 50% when we may have either altered budgets or altered the scope of the project to, to fit where we were at?
And that's what, I just went back to that funnel graph we had. I mean, that's what that's trying to depict. So you're halfway through the design and you're in that green area, that class two area. You've narrowed it down, you're, you're getting more certainty, but not the level of certainty that you're, you're getting to when you're 90 to 100%. And so that, this is all just part of, part of the process. You know, one of the approaches you could take is you can look at what contingencies do we build into that conceptual estimate at the CIP point? You know, if we were consistently having projects come in above our CIP numbers, do we build more of a contingency in at that point? There's some challenges to that too, though, because if I build big contingencies into every project in the CIP, what do I do? I basically take money off the table that we potentially could use for another priority, another project. Because, you know, if I build in a 50% contingency in every project, every project's not going to go 50% over. So I've taken some money off of the table that we could be using to accomplish our goals. So there needs to, you know, if, if that's a concern, you have some discussion about what level of contingency is appropriate. The other thing to realize about contingencies is you don't want people to know there's a contingency there and assume that a contingency is a consumable item. In building construction, that's an issue where they build in this 10% contingency and it may be in the, in the bid price. And people are thinking, oh, I got 10% to play with, I can use that to add this to the contract, that to the contract. That's not what it's intended for. It's intended to cover risk and uncertainty, not to be a pot of money that we can add things to a project because we've changed our idea of what the scope is. So that's just to give you an idea of kind of what, what goes behind all of this. So we talked a little bit about why, when we get to construction and bidding, why things can vary, due to the market, due to things like the cost of steel, the cost of fuel, the cost of asphalt, cost of cement, the complexity of the job, size of the job, contractors' current workload and their backlog of work. And again, they have competitive considerations, how interested they are in getting this job, do they need this work? Prices change. This is an Iowa graph, but it's a, it's like the Consumer Price Index, but it's just for construction material costs. You can see that at certain times during the last decade or two, we've had some significant increases in materials costs related to construction. They're much more than the overall increase in Consumer Price Index. And then you have years where it may go down a little bit and then it's going to come back up. And we're probably in a year here where we're seeing it come back up a little bit further. That's graphed up to 2017. So finally, after all that, we get to a change order, okay? Which is one of the things that we're talking about. A change order is a written document that's going to be prepared by your engineer, consulting engineer, architect in some cases, and the owner and the contractor are agreeing to some change in the work. And it's a change in the work and it often is going to result in a change in the contract price. You could have a change order that does not change prices, okay? It's just a change in how we're going to accomplish the work or some item we're going to install. But we typically think of it as a change that results in a change in price. It can also be a change in the amount of time to complete a project. All right? So you may have something that changes the work, but it also extends the time it takes to get a project done. That would also be detailed in a change order. Why do they happen? In unit price contracts, we already talked about, we estimate a quantity and then we measure the actual quantity. So there are going to be overruns and underruns of individual quantities and we add all those things up and our total is going to be different than what that total bid price was. And we're going to pay based on that. So there's going to be a change associated with that. We may initiate changes. We heard about the park shelter and so we initiated as an owner, a design change, right? And so you initiate that after a project's been bid, that's going to be negotiated with the contractor, what's the additional cost of that? We can better control our costs if we can get those details worked out before we bid because we have the advantage of competition on that pricing. Once we have a contractor locked in and we do a change, you know, we don't really have the opportunity, once we've hired them to build the park shelter, of saying, well, we don't like your price on our design change, we're going to go find somebody else because we're already locked into this contract. So that, you know, that is something to consider in those cases. Contractors may request change orders. They may identify a more effective way to do the work. They may actually come to you sometimes and say, I could save you money by doing it this way. And if it's an acceptable thing to do, it still meets our standards, it still accomplishes the quality that we're looking for, it still provides the, you know, the, the same aesthetics we're looking for, whatever our considerations are, we may agree to that. They may also come and identify something where some detail of the design isn't constructible or it's very difficult to construct and, you know, or some things missing. There's some component that's missing that needs to be there in order for this to be a complete system that wasn't specified. So there may be cases where they're coming with changes that are increases in prices. And then your staff or your consultant is going to evaluate those, look at whether those are in fact reasonable and whether they agree with them. There's going to be a discussion about the price, contractor's going to submit a price. There may be negotiation back and forth before you even see what that final change order is. Unanticipated conditions. Wisconsin, our soil is very, all over the place. Very quickly, we can have a difference in soils. We try to do work to identify the soil conditions. You do some pretty extensive investigation before a project, but there are still those variations. Underground utilities. There is some work done to identify underground utilities ahead of time, but they can be at a different elevation than was anticipated or the utility was going along this line and you think it's going straight and at some point it veered over to here and came back and there's an area where it's in your way and you have to make an adjustment for that. Environmental issues as well.
Go on, James, we're thinking the same thing, I can tell just by the look on.
Well, I, I think, you know, utilities, you know, that's a common one, you know, we, you know, during design, you know, we call in, you know, to Digger's Hotline, what's called a planning level locate. You know, there's a different set of rules for responding to planning level locates than there is, you know, construction locates. You know, a lot of times it's based off of records as for the elevation. Sometimes, you know, in the case of Oregon Street, AT&amp;T went out and did a whole lot of potholing to try to find out exactly where they were at on some of our crossings to see if they did or did not have to go through a lot of effort to relocate some of their facilities. So, you know, a lot of times we'll work with those utilities to try to get them to do that. Sometimes they will, sometimes they won't. You know, so that's some of the challenges working with our, you know, kind of partners in the right of way, if you will.
But to that point, I mean, so you're at the planning level locate and then they, we get into the project and that planning level locate was obviously not the same as the construction level locate. I mean, where's the, I guess, where's the responsibility? I mean, that's where it gets a little confusing if that, if that was just this at a glance kind of thing for planning purposes, but then it's like, oh, well, no, not really.
Well, even during, you know, when the contractor calls in the Digger's Hotline locate, that will only give them X and Y, it will not give them Z, a depth or an elevation. You know, that's generally not known until the utility is exposed or they do some physical, you know, potholing or some other exploration to try to find that elevation. And a lot of times, you know, if they're willing to, to do the effort ahead of time to try to pothole it and find it, we can work around it. There are a lot of other times where contractor gets there and, oh, shoot, this isn't where we thought it was going to be. You know, we, we quick it out there, okay, well, if we do this and, you know, get the utility out there, well, okay, can you do that? And a lot of times, you know, with the plastic gas mains, they're like, well, here, we'll just pull it up a little bit so you can slide your pipe through underneath it and, you know, we'll call it a day and after your pipe's in, you know, maybe we'll come back and do it. Or there's a lot of times with gas mains, they're like, you know what, we'll just cut this piece out of your way so your contractor can keep moving and then we'll come back in and replace it. But there are other times where, where they can't. You know, we just had a situation come up here a couple of weeks ago where, you know, they had, they did not know the elevation of a rather significant gas main. And so they finally, as, you know, after the project's been bid awarded and the contractor's starting to talk with them, they finally went out and potholed it and got an elevation. Well, it's right smack in the middle of a fairly large storm sewer. So now, you know, we're having to make some, some changes. We're actually going to stop short of that conflict because they're planning on completely replacing that particular line here in the next year. So we're like, well, I'll construct the rest of my project, you get out of the way with your project, then I'll come back in another year or two and finish my project. You know, I'll take it out of this contract because I'm not going to hold a contract open for two or three years waiting for that last piece because that ties up, you know, not only are we keeping the contract open, it ties up bonds and insurance for the contractor as well. So we'll delete that from this contract and rebid that part of the project, you know, in two or three years with another project. So there's never really a Z until somebody goes out there and exposes it.
And one of the examples for that is, and this is, we're our own worst enemy, or we were the victim of being our own worst enemy. There are some cases in some of the older areas of larger corridors where we replaced sewers years ago and rather than incurring the cost of getting rid of the old sewer, we left the old sewer mains in place. They're not being used anymore, so they don't show up on any drawings because we're not using them anymore. But surprise of surprise, when we start digging, we come upon. But, surprise of surprise, when we start digging, we come upon these sewer mains and then we have to make sure that they're not connected to anything. Because when you suddenly find them, you say, I hope these are not connected to anything. And you have to make sure that those are all okay. And then suddenly you're paying for removal of, of equipment or facilities that should have been removed fifty years ago. But it was a good, it was a good inexpensive way to do it. It's like, oh, we got plenty of right of way. That was, we had plenty of right of way before you had storm sewers and telephone lines and fiber and things like that. So, back then, the decision was made, well, we'll just move the sewer over five feet and we'll be okay. So, we found ourselves victim to that. And then if you don't, and then there's the other concept of as-bills, which, you know, is sort of the housekeeping engineers have to do at the end of a project. Making sure that all the little field decisions that were made, which were made with good intentions and good sound, practical considerations. If they don't put it, if they don't do their housekeeping at the end and say, oh, by the way, I happened to move this over three feet and we don't have that. All we have are the initial, uh, shop drawings that were done for design. If we don't change them for the final product, those can also fall through the cracks. So, it's not until you do the actual digging and, and find this stuff that you even know for sure.
I guess, you know, if I could just go off a little bit here, I guess, what I would like to know is, do we not have, like, the technological ability to, via, um, either the video lines or, I don't know, some kind of radar? I, aren't there technological ways of knowing where things are more specifically?
There is an, uh, sorry.
Inventory?
There is an approach, um, and in fact, we, we twit around with whether we're going to add this into the discussion. Uh, subsurface utility engineering, which would be basically doing, um, the, the level of exposing, physically exposing all of those utilities and getting a elevation measurement on those utilities as well as an offset from whatever your center line is of your road. Um, and you can invest in the design stage of a, a project to do that. So that would be hiring someone to come out and, so the utility companies do all their, you know, design stage locating, which is that paint mark on the, the pavement or on the parkway that really is plus or minus eighteen inches?
Eighteen inches for Wisconsin.
Okay, eighteen inches, alright. So, you basically have a, you know, when they draw a stripe there, it's a three foot wide stripe, alright? It could be somewhere in that three feet. And they're doing that based on electronic locating. So if you were doing the subsurface utility engineering, you might do some things like ground penetrating radar and some other things, which may help you also to kind of further locate that without exposing it. But ultimately, at the highest level of that subsurface utility engineering, you would expose the top of every utility that might be in your way. There's a cost to that. Um, on very major projects with high complexity, uh, very crowded corridors, it may be worth doing that. There are probably a lot of projects where, where it's not. Um, when we talked about, kind of in preparation for this, when we talked about that and we talked about soil conditions, what you really have to look at is, how often do we have a project where one of these issues causes a change order? What's the cost of that change order?
Right.
And then what would the cost be of collecting that additional information? And it's never exact. I mean, it's never a hundred percent. It's absolutely never a hundred percent. So if ten percent of your projects had utility issues and there was some cost of that. And you said, well, but fifty percent of our projects have a risk of utility problems. So we're going to spend X dollars on each of those fifty percent of our projects to try to mitigate that risk. So what's the cost of spending that money upfront on those projects versus, you know, the percent of them that are going to end up having a problem? And you, and you make a trade-off there.
So then the follow-up would be, are we doing better at the housekeeping part, like Mr. Rolaff suggested, in terms of, I guess, inventorying and documenting? Or are we just kind of plowing through and onto the next?
No, a- a- as far as, you know, our record-keeping of our municipal utilities, um, we have made significant improvements. Uh, about four or five years ago, we made a conscious decision in intersections, we are not going to abandon utilities in place unless there's absolutely no way to remove them. Otherwise, we're just going to remove them and get them out of the way. Uh, but we've also done much better of documenting on those as-built plans. Okay, you know, here are the limits where we remove this pipe, the rest of this area is still just abandoned in place. And keeping that information in our geographical information system, the GIS. You know, that was not always the case. You know, those abandoned things were just taken out of the, the GIS. You know, we, we've had a GIS system here at the city for an excess of twenty years. You know, those abandoned records did not used to get kept. You know, now we are, so we can kind of have that database of...
Kind of the ghost map.
Yes, you know, it's, you know, this is what was here, you know. I, you know, I go back to when we did Church Avenue back in two thousand eleven. Uh, Church was two thousand eleven. The parking lot was thirteen and then Central was fourteen. You know, right here in the intersection of Church and Central, you know, they were down at, you know, a depth of about eighteen, seventeen, eighteen feet. And they did, they came across a pipe that, you know, we didn't have a record of. And we started doing a lot of extra digging, poke a hole in it, you know, send a camera up it, yep, it's an abandoned sanitary sewer. We didn't have a record of it. Well, now we can at least make a note so that, you know, as we update our plans and we go back and look at our, our red line plans, yeah, there was a, a s- former sanitary sewer here that we came across. So, you know, in the last, you know, I would say five to ten years, we have made significant improvements in the level of, uh, that information that we are keeping and keeping in our GIS. And the GIS has advanced, you know, tremendously in that amount of time to help us keep those records in place.
But there's still a baseline of data because you have facilities that you own that are much older than twenty years. And that original information went into the GIS system, GIS system based on maybe an as-built plan, which may or may not have been accurate. Uh, or maybe just the design plan. Or in some cases, um, you know, if it was a change that was made by maintenance staff, I've seen things where it's pencil drawings in a three-ring binder, um, you know, that you're trying to transfer into that. So, some of your own information that goes, is based on historical records, even though it's in the GIS system, may not be that accurate. The information from the other utilities, they're going to provide you with what they call atlas information and it's notoriously, um, not accurate. I mean, I've sat in discussions at the state level, the state DOT has the same issues. I mean, they're trying to figure out, how do we work with the utilities to get more accurate information earlier in the design process to, you know, limit this risk? It's, it's a problem that's common to everyone, um, and so it's not like you're in a situation where you're not doing something that other people are doing. Um, it's a, it's an issue across the industry.
So, Ben, your next bullet there is errors or, or, errors and omissions, but unanticipated conditions really aren't errors and omissions.
No, an unanticipated condition is not an error and omission. Um, you know, will, an error and omission would be something that reasonably a designer should have been able to anticipate and with his professional knowledge should know that needs to be included in a project and forgets to include it, you know, or, or does a design that does not work. Um, so, that's really what more errors and omissions is and, um, we'll, we'll kind of bump through that here.
So, go ahead, Lori, and I'll follow.
No, no, go ahead.
Well, I think that's where, and I, I shouldn't speak for any of my fellow council members, but that's where my, um, my main concern would be with change orders. Um, and it's going to be in the engineering services that we're going to talk about a little bit too. But, is it scope of work change or is it error omission? Or is it something that, while you, while we can consider it unanticipated conditions, should it have been a anticipated condition that either staff didn't convey or that the contractor just wasn't aware of? And the root cause of that change, because that's where it can be frustrating to find out, you know, we're looking for approval tonight and where, where is the root cause of the change coming from? And maybe that's an information gap that we just need to, to close and that's okay, but where's the root cause?
And, you know, is there some bias built in because obviously the contractor does not want an E and O on their claims with their insurance? So, it falls into their categorization of an unanticipated or a scope creep.
And when we're, when we're talking errors and omissions, that's generally talking about your designer, okay? So if you have a design consultant who's done that, yeah, and they're not, gener- they're generally going to try to not have things hitting their errors and omissions insurance. I mean, I've been in the room with discussions about, uh, things of that type and they're trying, you know, on the consultant side. And they're trying not to, to have that impact because that affects their loss experience, which affects their rates. Uh, so often those things are negotiated. Um, when it comes to unanticipated conditions, you know, I'm not saying that you didn't think there was going to be any rock on the job. And oh my gosh, we totally forgot that there might be rock on the job. I'm saying that we did some work and based on the work that we did, we thought there was this quantity. We get out there and we start doing excavation and we find out that, you know, something, something changed right at the, right after this particular boring. And our assumption was that it changed, you know, halfway in between the two borings. Because you're making, you're making a guess in between those data points. Now, if you want more data points, there's more cost to getting those data points and you can still have a change in between the data points. So, it's not that you're going, I had no idea that there could be a change in our soils. It's that we quantified a certain amount and we got something different. Um, unsuitable subgrade soils on pavement, that can be based on material that is saturated with water, okay? So, it has to do sometimes with the quality of, you know, the function of the drainage system. Uh, it can sometimes have to do with what the weather's been before you get out on that project. So you may have material that you need to overexcavate in order to get a stable base to work on the project. And you try to anticipate that based on your knowledge of the soils, based on the soil borings. But you're not, again, you're, you're not going to be a hundred percent on that. So, some of those changes, it's not that you didn't anticipate that it might be there, it's that the quantity estimate is different than the actual.
And another, another one that we've seen a lot, you know, as we're reconstructing some of our old streets, is at times literally the street was constructed without even stripping topsoil. You know, that's, you know, an unsuitable material to build a road on, you know, by today's standards. But, you know, a hundred years ago, just put some pavement down without, you know, taking the effort to, to do that level of work. You know, so again, you know, the soil borings identify it, but it's not, you know, at those locations, it might be six inches and then five feet away, it might be twelve or eighteen inches. So those are some of the challenges that we, we face when we're going through those little steps.
Or you encounter a location where many years ago when they built it, they decided that that was an excellent location to bury all of the, the tree trunks from the trees they cut down. Um, and then you have a deep excavation in one spot. I've had projects where things like that have happened.
Around here, it's usually sawdust.
Oh, okay. So, you're, you're, yeah. You're trying to quantify those things with your investigation ahead of time, but you, you, again, it's based on how much information you have. Am I on time? Are we at our?
Page eleven out of nineteen and we're a little past six o'clock, so as long as questions keep coming on, I think we're good.
We're, our goal had, you know, upfront had been to try to be out of here by seven. I know, Mary, you want to try to get going a little sooner if we could, but, uh...
I just wanted to, you know, make sure that we were okay on that. Alright. So, I want to get to the errors and omissions, but let's just talk about a couple of things. Um, do change orders always cost more? No, we said that there can be change orders, balancing type of change orders at the end of a, a unit price contract where we're actually reducing the quantity, reducing the cost. There could be a situation where contractors suggest a change that could reduce cost, kind of a value engineering type of change. So they're not always adds to the cost. It does seem like they're more adds to the cost than there are D-decs. When is it in your best interest to approve a change order? Well, obviously to reduce project cost, as long as you're still accomplishing your goals of that project and you're still building what you want to build. A change in scope to additional objective that you have. You know, the example of, excuse me, example of, you know, taking part of a project out because of a utility conflict, it's in your best interest to do that. Well, that would be a change to that project. Um, to take advantage of attractive pricing. We have good unit prices from a contractor for full-depth patching. We have some additional patching work that needs to be done adjacent to that project and we can take advantage of those good prices. It may be in our best interest to add that work in and get that good pricing. Evelyn Bayshore would be the prime example.
A, a good example, but also Packer Avenue, last year, we did a significant amount of patching between Wisconsin and Jackson. Um, one of our utility projects had a lot of concrete patching work on it. They had a very good price. We talked to the contractor, they said, yeah, we'll honor that price to do some more work. So that's, you know, again, taking advantage of a very good bid price to get some additional work done that otherwise either would not have gotten done or would have had to gone through a lot of other steps to get done.
But Evelyn was that we had to?
Evelyn, we had a utility failure, um, you know, yes, we had a utility failure in the storm sewer. The sanitary sewer was equally as bad. The water main had several breaks. Um, you know, so, you know, that one, we did need to do some work. We had a contractor right there. We talked to that contractor and that contractor said, yeah, I'll hold those, those prices on all that extra work. And we added seventeen hundred feet of street reconstruction and he said, yeah, those prices, I'm, I'm good with them, I'm comfortable. He talked to all of his subcontractors, they all said the same thing.
We had to do some... Go ahead, Lori, because it may be asking...
What percentage, um, for example, of the, the city's, um, I guess sewer has not been televised? Or what has, what percentage has been to this extent that we can reasonably anticipate some of those more critical failure events?
We are, we are routinely televising storm, uh, storm sewers and sanitary sewers throughout the city. As far as what percentage is done on any given year, um, I don't recall that information off the top of my head. Uh, what we do, however, is, um, for the streets we're planning to reconstruct next year, um, in a few months, we'll ha- be hiring a contractor to televise those. And that, you know, is additional supplementary information to what our Streets Division is already doing on routine televising. You know, that was, you know, we used the Mount Vernon example. Streets Division was out doing routine televising and routine cleaning when they came across this sanitary sewer failure. Um, you know, that, that was just discovered through our, our routine inspections. You know, we have, you know, from a sanitary standpoint, we have close to two hundred and seventy miles of sanitary sewers within the city. Um, you know, so it's, you know, to try to even televise five percent of that on an annual basis is, is a tall order. Uh, you know, so we, we are, you know, we're targeting areas, um, you know, in the past, only small diameter like local mains have been televised. Some of the large diameter interceptor sewers had not because prior to about three years ago, the televising equipment we owned as a city was not capable of televising that size of main. It just did not have the quality of camera and the interchangeability to be able to put, you know, much bigger tires on it to be able to drive through those larger mains. We didn't have that until a few years ago. Um, so now we've been able to start televising some more of those larger diameter mains. And we have found some things. We found a couple of cases where, you know, there was root balls, you know, tree roots growing through and, you know, almost completely blocking some of these mains. So then we have to go through and do a, you know, a root cutting exercise to, to remove those things. So, you know, in the last five years, we have increased our, our overall, uh, amount of televising. But I don't remember the exact numbers off the top of my head, unfortunately.
So, the last, well, the last reason you might approve a change order, which is the one that, you know, we get into this situation a lot, is it's going to be something that, you know, may increase the price of the project. You know, we're not changing the scope, we're not getting some additional, accomplishing some additional goal out of it. But in order to complete the project, due to unanticipated condition or something that was omitted, um, we need to do this change in order to make a complete project, right? And those are probably the ones that give you a little bit of heartache because you say, well, I wish we were able to, you know, do this without this change. But nobody in the whole process, your consultant, uh, your engineer, uh, nobody really wants the change order. Uh, we're all trying to get it so that we don't have these things occur, but they do occur at some time.
So where does, uh, this scenario fall? Unanticipated condition or errors and omission or other when subcontractors don't perform as anticipated? Where does that fall?
Well, you're probably...
I'm thinking of South Park.
South Park, that's more of a performance issue and a contract, contract management issue.
Mm-hmm.
Um, uh, I thought the example you were going to use was, uh, you, over on, uh, Oregon Street this year, that fiber got, got nicked.
Yeah.
And that's basically ignoring the work that had been prepared and said, you've got fiber here, you're supposed to be, you, basically, you're supposed to hand dig around fiber. And if you say, oh, I still got another, you know, three feet and then you use a scoop or something and I don't know all the conditions. I've let James and other folks deal with that issue. But when you don't follow the instructions, that is an error or omission. Now, that's on the execution side of things, not in the spec side of things. So, in that case, the subcontractor... So in that case, the subcontractor, and this is my, you know, uneducated, because I, James and I have, probably haven't talked about this in a few months. But pardon?
Not in a while, no.
Yeah, but if they didn't follow the instructions, that's, that is going to be an error and omission. And that's going to be expensive one because they knocked out fiber for a number of days.
Four counties.
And yeah, in just four counties. So it was pretty rough.
But that's a contractor's cost, not a city's cost, or should be a contractor's.
We didn't incur any extra costs there.
We didn't, but obviously the customers or the surrounding area did.
And to go back to your question regarding South Park, again, that's not design issue related. That becomes a contract performance issue and that's where in our contracts, you know, we set dates for substantial completion and final completion. And there is a clause in the contracts called liquidated damages. So contractor, in this particular case, you know, that contractor by not completing the work on time is costing them one thousand five hundred dollars per day, calendar day, that they have not completed that work on time.
So, but in the design, in the scope, I guess maybe I'm a little confused because I'm thinking of like in the scope document, if we end up having to come back to something because they didn't expect that it was going to take as much, again, going back to the unanticipated conditions. They didn't think it was going to take as much and then they end up having to do more. I guess that's where it just gets a little fuzzy for me.
We've given you a universe of things that can occur and it's not necessarily an error or omission or quantity. It could be any number of things. In this case, it's performance by the contractor, just dragging their feet. And that's, now are there reasons for it? They're probably busy making more money on another project. They may consciously decide, I'm going to run your project late. I'm going to run the Oshkosh project late because I'm making more money over here. And some of them make a conscious decision. I'll pay that fifteen hundred dollars a day because it's cheaper to give up that fifteen hundred dollars a day than lose money on a more lucrative project.
That's going to the contract.
Correct.
They know that going in.
Or they might have a project where they, you know, because of the size or scope, their liquidated damage might be ten times what our contract is. So they're going to, you know, allocate their resources and take the, you know, lowest risk. You know, you never know what's going through their minds. As Ben said, we, you know, we're not contractors. We're just guessing at what it is and we have to try to contractually protect ourselves as best we can.
Yeah, I guess, do we ask that question? I know this is kind of later in here when we talk about like getting to know the firm and the RFQ and that. But do we ever ask those kinds of things? Like what other project conflicts or competition are we dealing with here?
As far as on the design scope of things, certainly as we go through reviewing qualifications, you know, we will ask at times, okay, you know, similar projects, what have you had for change orders on these types of projects? You know, because that does give you an indication of, well, you know, if all of these projects you've had a, on average, a, you know, fifteen percent increase in change orders, well, that leads you, okay, you know, maybe they are, you know, not as careful on the design where, you know, if they're, you know, in that, you know, five percent range, you know, as Ben said, you know, ten percent, you know, generally, you know, as design engineers, you know, if you're under ten percent on that, you're usually feeling pretty darn good about your design. You know, you didn't miss stuff. It's just, you know, those little, you know, those little kind of odds and ends that add up to that amount.
So maybe they just weren't as skilled at the contingency estimation.
Right.
And you were kind of talking about two different things. The examples were contractor issues. And when we're talking about Arizona emissions here, that would be on the design side of it. So that's either the in-house design or the consultant design.
The pre-work, yeah.
There can be cases though where a change that we make, as we talked about before, the change could be an extension in time as well. You could have that contract where the contractor has liquidated damages. But because of a change we made, the contractor's going to say, well, in making that change, you've extended the time it takes me to complete the work. That should be part of the change order negotiation.
And often is as we're working through it.
Generally, a contractor is very motivated to get that project done as soon as possible. It enables that contractor to make the most money as quick as possible and move on. When you suddenly see progress and then it halt, something's going on elsewhere. It's not us, it's them. And, but we give them a reasonable amount of time to complete it. And if they get half the project done in the first six weeks of the project, then it's a six month project and suddenly it slows down, we've given them six months to do it. It becomes frustrating for us because everybody can plainly see that progress has been made on a project, yet suddenly they stop. Why? Probably got, they're probably making better money on another project elsewhere and they know they've got, you know, four and a half months left to get the project done.
And that's why we generally try to set our construction windows tight enough to avoid those issues, but not too tight that it drives the cost up. You know, because if we set a construction window too tight, the contractor's going to say, you know what? In order to do this job, I'm going to have to work twelve hour days instead of ten hour days. So I'm going to factor that extra overtime into my bid. You know, so that's a fine line that we're trying to balance as we set up construction windows and timelines in our projects.
And with the discussion about kind of the capacity and qualifications and, you know, experience with change orders, certainly you look at those things with the consultant as you're doing evaluation of the consultant. There is some possibility of looking at some of that with contractors if you were to do a pre-qualification system where you had contractors having to submit financial information, information about the equipment they have, the resources they have in order to determine, before you even bid a project, whether contractors are qualified. There's pluses and minuses to that and I don't know if.
We do a pre-qualification process, yeah.
So you obviously have to set some parameters and you have to have some criteria, some reasonable criteria against which you evaluate them. The advantage is then you identify contractors who should be capable of doing this work. The disadvantage is there may be a contractor who does not have a significant amount of experience, but may very well be in a position now where they're capable of doing that work and would be another competitor in the market who can't get their foot in the door because they don't have the history. Everybody has to have a first project or a second project. Sometimes you don't want it to be your project. It depends on the qualifications. But, so there are things like that you do as well to try to identify people who are going to be capable of doing this project. Alright, so reduction in change orders. And by putting these things up there, I'm not saying these aren't things we're doing now, but generally things you'd look at. Well-defined scope of work, complete scope of work, complete description of work, accurate cost estimates, quantity estimates with as much information as possible. We talked already about how you can increase some of your subsurface investigation to potentially reduce the uncertainty, but then you have additional costs upfront to that. And, you know, your availability of resources, the people resources, the dollar resources to do that additional investigation. We're not going to be able to eliminate change orders. We're not going to be able to eliminate a hundred percent of uncertainty in projects. We can reduce it. There's going to be some costs associated with reducing it. But, you know, things are buried under the ground and we can't see them. And we're making our best guess with the data points we have, our very educated guess as to what it looks like underground. And we don't really know a hundred percent for sure until it's exposed. This was thrown in there because I know there was some discussion about the soil borings and the, you know, the geotechnical investigation ahead of a project. And so I looked for data from other places. I was trying to find data where they looked at the cost of the geotech investigation versus, you know, you know, the change orders, cost of change orders. Was not able to find that. But this is an example out of Indiana. This is state DOT projects, so a little different than municipal projects. But basically, in terms of cost, twenty percent of their change order costs were related, between ten and twenty percent depending on the year, were related to soils. Right? So there are a lot of other reasons other than soils, geotechnical issues, why they're seeing change orders. The ones that they had that were soils related were a little more costly in terms of, you know, the particular change orders. But it's only ten to twenty percent of their total. That may be different in the case of a city, that may be different in a different location. But just kind of give you an idea of another entity where there's some data available. We did also attach on the back, right?
Yeah, it's attached to the back with the geotech, the excerpts of that policy you had grabbed Ben.
Just to kind of give you an idea, I would say, on my experience, most agencies your size probably have no policy at all on geotechnical investigation for projects. Just from the data points of experience I have in working with, one, working in the industry, two, doing training for agencies in the industry. So this actually was pulled out of a much larger policy in the city of Houston. Now, the geology in Houston is different than the geology in Oshkosh. But it was just to give an example, large city, fairly sophisticated, you know, complete policies. And just to give you an idea of what they're doing, just kind of an information point.
We don't, it's not customary, but some larger cities do that?
My impression is you're ahead of the game compared to most cities in what you're doing, what was described to me.
We don't have a, you know, a written policy, but we have a practice that we follow. And our practice on street reconstruction projects is that we do soil borings every two hundred feet down a street. We look at conceptually what is the deepest utility that we're going to be installing in that street. And we target a soil boring depth of five to ten feet deeper than that deepest utility. Because, you know, if you just look at the flow line of, it's typically the sanitary sewer. And when you dig out for the manholes, you got a couple of extra feet of excavation. So we're usually in that five to ten foot range. And like I said, we're every two hundred feet going down a street with soil borings. You know, that's, you know, it has not always been the case, but for the last, you know, I believe about the five to ten year mark, that's been the level of effort we've undertaken in our soil boring and our geotechnical exploration. I was trying to look back with staff this morning. I could only recall in the last five years, one change order that had geotechnical related costs to it. And that was just some of the variability of the rock formation in between those two hundred foot data points.
So in the example that was attached, kind of their default is five hundred foot spacing on their streets. Now there's some language where obviously, you know, their approach is if there are areas where they're known that there's more uncertainty, they would bring those closer together. But so doing two hundred foot spacing, I think you're probably ahead of what other people are doing in that regard.
We've been burned enough. I mean, we just know, you're in Sawdust City, those types of things will happen.
I mean, I deal with some very small agencies around the state and they're doing nothing, quite honestly. And I'm not saying that's a good practice, but there are a lot of agencies that really are not doing, putting a lot of investment into the exploratory investigative work in advance of a project. And they should be. It makes sense to do that investment before a project. Alright, so that's kind of most of the kind of change order discussion. A little discussion about consultants and maybe a little bit of the consultant role in change orders. But other questions at this point before we jump into that?
Then keep going Ben.
Okay. So do we bid engineering services? That was kind of one of the questions we had on our list as we were thinking about this and what questions may be. You don't bid engineering services in the same way that you bid construction contracts. The general process is something referred to as qualification-based selection. If you deal with federal funds, there's going to be a requirement to do that. It is a process that Wisconsin DOT uses on their projects. The American Consulting Engineers Council or Consulting, Council of Consulting Engineering Companies promotes this very much. It's obviously in their interest to have that. It's not actually a requirement for local projects to do this type of selection. But it's a typical process used in the industry. And this would be generally an outline of that approach.
Although in practice, we may not necessarily do that. If we are saying that there's benefit to continuing on with the same consultant because of their knowledge and history, we may be skipping this piece?
Well, I think not necessarily skipping it, you know, it certainly falls into the qualifications, you know, because they have that unique qualification at times. It's not always the case, you know, there are projects, you know, as Mark and I were talking today, you know, the field operations facility, we'd never done anything like that. So it was, you know, it was a very, very much almost step by step through this qualification-based review, you know, to continually narrow the field down until, you know, it kind of got to the last two and then there was interviews and, you know, a lot of steps that went through that way, so.
In that case, everybody had a learning curve. So there was no one advantage over the other. And typically when you're doing a once in a generation project, ours is more of like a once in two generation project. But when you're doing that and we ended up picking a firm out of Kenosha, I never had heard of them before, but based on their experience, we, that's why we ultimately selected them because they had done cities our size. I mean, they had done projects just like ours. That's kind of what put them over the top.
Yeah, so a lot of times, you know, there may be, you know, you know, a couple or a few firms that, you know, have, you know, those qualifications and, you know, that we're probably already working with them on projects. You know, there's, you know, AECOM, CH2M Jacobs, Strand, Brown and Caldwell. You know, they've all, you know, across whether it be water, wastewater, stormwater, they've all done a number of projects. The staff, you know, that's one of the things, you know, the qualifications of the staff is much more important than the qualifications of the firm. You know, Brown and Caldwell was a new firm to us about five years ago. Well, a number of stormwater modeling staff from AECOM left and went to Brown and Caldwell. They had all of that experience, knowledge, history and, you know, so it was a new firm, but it was the same people doing a lot of work because of their experience and their, you know, unique qualifications for that. So it's, you know, it's kind of, you know, getting into that, you know, developing a shortlist of qualified firms to try to work with to do those projects.
When we, that box that says request statements of qualifications, it's not just about the firm. If we're unfamiliar with the firm, we want to see the qualifications of those individuals who are going to be assigned to our project. Not that the firm can boast that they did this project and where's that person now? Well, they're not going to tell you, they're working for their competitor now. And they don't say those things. So those are the things you really have to dissect when you're going through the QBS process.
And this flow chart is really, you know, the project you described where we have, we're starting from scratch and we're acquiring a consultant to do this type of project. And either we haven't done that before or we have some we have not been satisfied with and we're out hitting the street trying to find someone who's well qualified to do this. And so in that, in that you have, first of all, you establish what your scope is. You establish what your criteria are going to be for evaluation. That statement of qualifications, that's really getting kind of a fairly brief amount of information from a large number of firms to try to identify a small group that you're going to ask to give you more detailed proposals. Because consultants actually put quite a lot of money into a detailed proposal to do design for you. And so generally what you try to do is do a limited request for that qualification information from a large universe. And then you whittle it down to a small number and then you ask for additional detail from those.
And those, you know, the kind of left side of that chart is a very time-intensive process. You know, going through and, you know, trying to write a detailed scope of services, requesting the statements of qualifications. You know, most firms, you know, while they may have a kind of a canned SOQ, statement of qualifications, they're going to look, most of them are going to look at, okay, what type of services are you really asking for? And do a tailored statement of qualifications. And then the, going through the time to review and kind of develop that list. You know, that can be several months worth of work on staff standpoint to get to the point of, you know, even trying to, you know, get to a proposal to review or a couple of proposals to review.
Well, and I would imagine even the pre-work before you even get to the scope, to come up with some of the specs to even be able to tell you what we want in the scope, right?
You're right. The step that's not even before this is, you know, what level of preliminary engineering or study have you done? You know, I'll take a stormwater example. We do a watershed-wide stormwater management plan to get to identify a couple of projects. Okay, so that's, you know, you may have gone through. Okay, so that's, you know, you may have gone through this process to determine who was going to do that work, but then you might also go through this process again, okay, now we want to implement this recommendation from that report. You might go through this process all over again to implement that one aspect of that plan. So, you know, this could be, you know, to get to a project, you may have gone through this multiple times.
And when you look at kind of industry-wide, at least in municipal and in state, I mean, you have different approaches. First of all, there's some work that you design in-house. You design work in-house where you regularly do that type of work, you have the staff and the capacity to do that. You look for consultants when you don't have capacity or you have specialized work. In some cases, you may have, you know, some communities have kind of a consultant of record, or a consultant on retainer who does, you know, certain types of projects for them. You may have some things where you're somewhat have that effectively because you have a consultant who's designed two lift stations for you, and you have a third lift station that you're replacing, and you've just worked with them on two other projects, they know your system, they know your specifications, you know, they, they did a good job, you didn't have big changes on their projects, there were not problems with those. Does it then make sense to go through and start the whole process and select somebody new, if you have somebody you already know is qualified to do that work? So you ma, you make some of those choices, and there are times when it's in your best interests to continue with, with a firm. There are times when you look at, it's a, it's something that we don't normally do, it's very specialized, let's go out and find the most qualified person for that type of work.
James Road Watershed is a good example. The James Road Detention Pond was the largest project we're going to have in that watershed. It's our biggest watershed, which is Sawyer Creek. We ended up doing this whole process because it was the largest stormwater project we've ever done, number one, and number two, it was so unique and so large that no one had that level of knowledge advantage over another. And we, I think we picked Strand over several other firms. Wasn't it Strand we?
Yeah, there was, I think the request proposals was sent out to about a half a dozen different firms. Some chose to respond, some chose not to respond. But yeah, Strand was the one who ended up doing that design work.
But Sawyer Creek was so massive, they didn't do the.
They actually did do the watershed plan.
Oh, they did, so they had some familiarity with it, okay. But, you know, that doesn't necessarily mean if they did that watershed plan, Glats Creek, and I'm just throwing one out, just, just because they know Sawyer Creek, doesn't mean they know Glats Creek. And so sometimes, we take a look at it on a watershed basis, and in that case, they probably had some knowledge of the watershed more so than, than others, but we still sought proposals because it was so massive and so unique, given what, everything that was going on.
And in evaluation of, in a qualification-based selection system, you're, you're not evaluating initially based on price, you're evaluating based on the qualifications of the firm. So you're looking at their resources, you're looking at the experience of the proposed project staff. One of the things you have to be careful of is to make sure that the staff you actually get is the staff that they indicated in the proposal, because occasionally that can be an issue with firms. Experience on similar projects, ability to meet your schedule, what procedures do they have in place to assure the quality of the, of the deliverables, of the design, references from other, you know, similar projects they've worked on for other agencies, and talking to those folks about their experience with the firm. Those are all things that you're going to look at in doing that evaluation. And so you're doing this all really, if you're truly doing qualification-based selection, you're doing that all before you even talked about price. Now, there's some ways you can kind of do things that skirt that a little bit, because you can do a proposal where you ask for hours of work. Well, it's pretty easy to approximate hours into dollars. But when you do get into then negotiating with the firm that you selected based on qualifications, you would, you would prioritize on the highest, the highest priority firm, the one that scored highest, you'd go into negotiation. So they're going to give you probably, pretty typically, are they giving you an estimate of hours and hourly rates for the different staff who will be involved, or are they giving you lump sums, or?
No, generally, most of the contracts for engineering services that, that we do through Public Works are time and materials not to exceed. So yes, it'll be, here's our proposed staff, here's, you know, the, the range, you know, like engineer one, or project manager, and here's the, kind of the ranges of charge-out rates for people in that qual, category.
Right, so there'll be a rate, there'll be an overhead factor, there'll be, but there'll be some not-to-exceed number for the project.
Right.
And so those, you know, there, there are other ways where sometimes, if it's a fairly well-defined project, fairly limited scope, you might have a lump sum. That's not that typical, but occasionally you have that.
A lot of times, if we've got some very small contracts, for example, I, I need you to do a phase one on this property, I'm not going to do that time and materials, that's just, give me a price to do a phase one on this property, it's a lump sum project, but.
Standardized scope type of things.
Right.
Phase one being an environmental.
Yes.
Phase one environmental review.
Yes, sorry.
That's okay. Maybe everybody in the room knows, I just wanted to make sure. Maybe you've done enough of them that it's just in everybody's vocabulary. So this is just kind of laying out those, those different pricing approaches and when they may be appropriate. As I said, you, you know, in, in a true qualification-based selection system, you don't look at price until you've looked at qualifications, you identify the most qualified firm, and then you negotiate price with them. One of the ways that can be done is their proposal has two envelopes, one has their qualification information, and another sealed envelope has their pricing information. And you don't open the pricing information until you've had all the discussion about who's most qualified. That's one approach to it.
And a lot of times, we'll do kind of a hybrid of that, you know, the recent one that came before council was the digester mixing system upgrade at the wastewater treatment plant. And that was a bit of a hybrid. It wasn't truly two envelopes, it was a, an attachment to the, the proposals that were reviewed, and we, but we went through and we reviewed the qualifications and how well the proposals showed that they really understood what we were asking for. And in the end, you know, the, the team that was reviewing the proposals, two firms, you know, came to the top as the most qualified. At that point, then we did take a look at, okay, how, how does, you know, how does the cost factor into that? And in the end, of the two most qualified firms, it was the lower cost of the two that we determined would be our best solution for that project. So we kind of hybrid that system a little bit at times.
Right, and some of the parameters of what's negotiated in that, the scope, the schedule, we already talked about the fee. So, change orders and consultants, so how do they kind of interact with that whole process? First of all, there could be a change in their contract. So there's been some change in scope after we have a design agreement. We don't really call that a, a change order, an amendment to their professional service agreement, amendment to their contract. So we, we can have those types of changes. You know, in the course of doing the design work, there's something that's beyond the scope of what we initially anticipated when we put together that request for proposals for that design, those design services. And I don't know if you have an example?
I think, I think, you know, kind of a big example that we're currently going through right now is for the extension of Northwestfield Street and North Keller Street, you know, the, kind of the Oshkosh Avenue redevelopment. We went back and forth with whether we would try to tackle that with our in-house engineering division staff, or whether we would go out for a consultant to perform those services. In the end, the engineering division staff felt, you know, they, they could take this job on and do it. As we progressed, you know, as we've talked about, you know, with the wetland delineations, there was, you know, several different iterations of street design that were developed to try to avoid, minimize wetland impacts. You know, we would have probably been looking at significant professional service contract amendments to, to go through that number of iterations, because, you know, in the end, our one design engineer, I think, did five different designs for Keller Street to try to avoid and minimize those impacts. We would not have had that level of effort anticipated when we would have prepared the original contract for a consultant. So, you know, that's a case where by doing that in-house, you know, we were tying up staff time going through all those iterations, but there wasn't those significant, you know, contract amendments that we would have been faced with otherwise.
That scope changed.
Daily.
Yeah, it, it really was something, because of everything that the Corps of Engineers, you know, we didn't anticipate the Corps of Engineers even getting involved in this thing. And once they did, it just changed the, the scope of the work. So in that case, it was, it was beneficial to us to work it inside. Now, as the guys who worked on it, they had to change, they had to come up with five different designs, it was, it was very frustrating for them, but they're on the payroll, so it worked out well. Had we done a contractor, and we, we really debated that quite a bit. It's like, you guys have so much going on, let's get somebody on the outside. I think James was concerned about the uncertainty, and the uncertainty factor with that pretty vague design, if you take a look at that chart that Ben showed earlier, we were in that pink zone for quite a while, early on, and so we had to move from pink to, or class five?
Class five.
Five to class two pretty quickly, so in retrospect, it was a very wise decision to keep it inside, even though my brother probably was leaning towards going outside just because I wanted to spare the staff the amount of time that I knew it was going to take.
So sometimes, then, when we would make that choice of doing in-house and not having those change or professional service agreement amendments, it might actually cost us like opportunity costs though, right? Because, so we might not have spent the extra, I don't know, $100,000, but would it, are there times where doing it that way, the opportunity costs for working on other things? I mean, how do you, how do you weigh that out?
That is a significant factor. In fact, you know, I was with Mark leaning towards, you know, going into this, and right up till the end, I thought we should have gone with a consultant because our engineering staff was stretched to their limit. You know, we've only got a finite number of staff, and, you know, yes, that significantly impacts our ability to help service the other departments, you know, you know, without adding staff, you know, this one really stretched us, you know, extraordinarily thin, and, you know, we had a lot of people donate a lot of time to get this project to where it is right now, and it's still not out to bid. You know, so it's, it really comes down to what do we think our staff not only are capable of from a skill standpoint, but what do our staff have the available time to work on? And, you know, that becomes, you know, kind of the fine line of more staff versus consulting services, and, you know, there are certainly some things that, you know, we hire consultants to do that if we had a couple more staff in engineering division, we would be able to do in-house. You know, transportation came to us a couple of years ago and asked us to start doing the parking lot design work, and we managed to fit a couple of them in, but, you know, it's, it's getting to a point where that's very difficult for us, but, you know, so we, we kind of, kind of weigh, okay, what are we able to versus what do we not have the staffing to be able to do? And that's kind of some of those opportunities that, you know, we either take advantage of, or we have to bring somebody else in to do.
And I think generally, what local agencies are trying to do is have staffing to cover what is kind of your baseline amount of engineering work that you're going to typically have every year, and then you're really using the consultants then to deal with your peaks, either dealing with specialty work or dealing with peaks in work. So we get a very large project that we don't have the staff to handle, or we get specialized projects. Of course, then there are other agencies that have no engineering staff, or they have one engineering staff, and the one engineering staff basically manages consultants, and they do very little in-house.
And that's when I was in, in California, the last city I worked for was a contract city. It was one engineer managed everything, and that, that person was a contract manager, really. They were, you know, they never designed anything, just, but they, they put together scopes of work for lots of projects. I think with, with Westfield, it came down to, I don't know if we can really put together a scope of work that we can get a responsible proposal that won't change, and I think that was ultimately what finally.
It was.
Pushed your guys to push the two of us to follow their lead on it. And I, I give them credit, because they, they said, you want us to do this. And at first, I think we thought it was a matter of pride, because it's a high-profile project and everything. It had nothing to do with pride, it had to do with, you were going to change, you know it's going to change, we know it's going to change, we'll be more, we'll be able to be flexible. The contractor could have met the deadline, the timeline, but the contractor would have been changing the scope of work, well, James, this will cost you, and this will cost you, and this will cost you. And we would have pretty much been doing all of our design à la carte in, in the final analysis.
And I suppose on the plus side, you have some staff who are now much more familiar with dealing with Corps of Engineers and Corps of Engineers permits.
We certainly have more staff that have dealt with them, whereas before, we had one of us who had dealt with them on a regular basis.
So, when is a consultant responsible for the cost of a change order, and can we recover our costs? This was kind of one of our, you know, when we put together our list of questions that you might have, this was one on the list. And my initial reaction is almost never. But then we had a discussion, and you've had cases where in fact, the, the, there has been recovery of cost from consultants. The first thing with the error and omission would be, did it really cost you more? Okay, so my really simple, kind of ridiculous example would be, you hire a consultant to design a pump station for you, he forgets to put the pump in the specifications, all right? Does that cost you anything extra? Well, whether you buy the pump as part of the bid, or you buy the pump as part of the change order, you're still going to need to buy the pump. So really, the difference in cost is probably the difference between what price I could have gotten competitive bidding versus what price I pay on a change order, and maybe the extension in time on the contract, which might have some financial implications. But it's not the whole value of the pump, because you would have had to buy the pump regardless to get a complete pump station, okay?
But it does have an effect on the.
It, it does have an effect.
The budgetary impact of the decisions that we would make.
Right. But if you were looking at cost recovery on that, and you were getting to a point where, you know, a lot of that is going to be negotiated, you're going to sit down with your consultant, you're going to negotiate that. But if you're getting to the point where you're going to an attorney and saying, well, we want a suit to recover for this, the first thing they're going to look at is, what are your, what are your damages, what are your losses associated with this? And it may not necessarily be the full cost of that change. So that's just something to, to think about in that. So, an error or omission, again, that's something, they've made a mistake in the design, so they've give you, given you a design that is not going to work, it's not going to give you the product that you intended in a functional way, or they've forgotten some piece of that, they've left that out of their design. Again, it, it doesn't necessarily always have a cost component, or it's not necessarily all of the cost component that they would be responsible for. They do typically carry errors and omissions insurance. There's typically a self-insured retention, which is like a deductible, where a certain amount of that they're paying out of their pocket. A very large firm might have a pretty significant amount that they would be paying themselves. So some of that, they, they would be paying out of their, their own funds. And again, if it does hit their, their insurance, it's going to affect their loss experience, it's going to, it's going to affect their rates down the road. So often, they're going to be willing to negotiate something like that.
And, and we've had a couple of instances where, you know, that, there was a, a mistake that they made, and they have, you know, whether, you know, what that cost was to us from the contractor, they have either paid the contractor directly or credited us on, you know, the, a next invoice. You know, so if, say for example, their mistake cost us $10,000 more from a contractor, well, their next invoice would have a $10,000 credit on it to, to help cover that. So we have had, you know, Ben's first question to me, well, has that ever happened? I went, well, yes, it has happened, and this is how we've generally done it. You know, and again, it's been, you know, it's been sat down, talked about, negotiating, they're like, well, this is how we want to handle this, and, okay, we're getting our money back because you spent, you know, your staff were working on the project and spent that time, and you're taking that off of your invoice to me, so I am recovering that cost.
But there, there are a lot of situations where you have things like, scope of work is not errors and omissions. So a change in scope of work is not error or omission. You know, unanticipated condition, that's not error and omission on the part of the designer. So it's really limited to things that they neglected to include that, based on their professional knowledge, they should have included.
If they ignored the soil boring results, for example.
If they, if they ignored them, yes, but if they.
If they found bedrock, and then they didn't put any bedrock removals, like, why did you put bedrock removal in? So the addition.
But if they had them, they put a quantity in, and the actual quantity turns out to be different than what was anticipated, that's not errors and omissions. So, all right. Questions there? Another question we had, why not take an approach where change Another question we had, why not take an approach where change, and we've kind of gotten this discussion already, but change, let's change the engineering firm every three years, kind of like my example on the bottom is auditors, you know. There are agencies that, you know, you change the auditor every three years. The idea is a fresh set of eyes, right? And interestingly, when I looked at research on that, there's not even agreement on whether that is an effective thing. In some cases, it indicated that there was more error when you have this new firm come on, and they're not familiar with what you have in terms of, you know, your financial system. So if you take the same thought with your consultants, why would you want to continue with a consultant? Well, if they're doing work that is acceptable to you, you have some continuity. You don't have the loss of productivity in the transition between old consultant and new consultant. You don't have the ramp-up time where a new consultant needs to get familiar with your city, with your standards and your requirements. So, you know, there's some value to continuity. There's some value to that familiarity with your infrastructure and even with your staff and working with your staff. You avoid that learning curve. So those are advantages. You know, the disadvantages is, yeah, there may be someone else out there in that universe of consultants who has a better idea of how to approach this project, and you may miss them if you continue to use the same people. You find those folks, you may find those folks, when you do that, request for qualifications, request for proposal process. But it's a balancing act. We want to have people who we know their performance. We have some history of performance. They understand our system. But then we also want to have some assurance that there's some innovation there as well. So the approach of, you know, periodically going out for certain projects that are difficult projects, unique projects, is probably a good approach. Going out for every project or just on a calendar basis, saying every three years, we've got to switch it up. I don't think that would be a good idea. Another analogy to that would be an attorney, and I don't know if you have attorney staff on...
We do both. We have an internal staff.
You have internal, yeah, folks and retainers. Would it make sense to rotate a new attorney in every three years, in terms of your outside attorneys? Probably not, because they're going to be, first of all, there are going to be things that continue over from this three-year period to the next three-year period, and they're going to have the history, and they're going to have the knowledge. And the new person would have to go back and redo the research on that and get to the point where they understand that. And so you have a little bit of the same kind of thing here, where the incumbent consultant has a level of knowledge that the incoming consultant isn't going to have. And so there's some trade-off there. I don't know if that, does that address that issue a little bit? Questions about that or comments?
Well, I guess that, you know, there's an assumption built into that that the institutional knowledge is more beneficial than perhaps a newcomer who may have maybe more updated expert knowledge, perhaps.
Perhaps, yes.
So I guess...
And so that is, you know, that is an unknown.
Right.
Until, and in fact, it's somewhat of an unknown even after you've gone out and done that qualification process, because you have what you see on paper, and then you actually hire, and you see what people deliver. And sometimes the two don't match up. Other times, they match up very well, and you identify another consultant who is very capable of doing the work. And I'm all for a lot of competition in the work, but I understand why you'd want continuity as well.
It's the same thing with big companies and ad agencies. The more you switch, the more problems you have, and you start to...
And when, yeah.
Brand identity and mixed messages.
I'd probably suggest to you that the chart on page 14, while it is very time-consuming to go through that, but I would also suggest to you that James and his staff are doing that review on an ongoing basis. Every firm that we deal with, they're on review every time we deal with them.
Every project.
And if there's a mistake that we feel, we may not be able to quantify, but they've delayed something, we know it. And we're constantly evaluating them. And we do have a group of firms that we generally use, and we think they might be better for this project than another firm. Somebody switches firms. That's one of those things. The gentleman that James referred to with Brown and Caldwell, I can tell you that a lot of, that the City of Appleton used that same person, and the minute he switched firms, they switched firms, because that was... That was their, that was the free agent that they wanted to follow. And that type of stuff happens, but we're regularly taking a look at that. We're very pleased with the performance of some of these engineers. They switch a firm. We're going to be following them. We do that with attorneys. I mean, we've, you know the attorneys in town that do some legal work, and they've switched teams. And if we're satisfied with that person, we follow that person to that firm, because we're satisfied with their work. So a lot of it's our experience and our, I think, our just, our experiential knowledge of these folks. And we want to do that. Other times when we don't care for them, we make it clear, and either the firm removes that person, or we don't, we don't look at them anymore.
Well, and I think, you know, we had a prime example, you know, I had a project with a firm, you know, the project manager wasn't getting things done that I needed him to get done. And, you know, it got tense for a minute, and I called, you know, somebody else at the firm. I'm like, look, he's just not cutting it. I haven't had him on a project since. They took him out of the process because he wasn't doing the job that we needed done. So they put somebody else in that place that, you know, could get the job done. And, you know, and salvaged, in that case, salvaged a relationship that probably would have gone away had, you know, they left that person to try to finish that project that they weren't doing a good job on.
I think the last slide in the presentation, we've covered all this, because we've, in the course of discussing the consultants and consultant acquisition, we've really talked about all these reasons why you decide to go in-house or seek proposals or use consultant staff that you've used on other projects, so...
I guess I just did have a follow-up question related to that, and that is, I guess, at what point does hiring the consulting engineering services year after year, project after project, reach a comparison to that of adding that specialized staff in-house?
That's, I think, Ben had mentioned it earlier, when you have a, you generally try to get an outside consulting engineer for peak demand. So you have a certain level, what's your norm that you, a base of work? Now, the example I used, I said the community I worked for, my last community in California, we were looking at hiring, and ultimately, after I left, they did hire another engineer, because they determined that the base work that was being done was so high that having somebody internally just made more sense. So I think the, sort of the base increased, so that it warranted hiring somebody. And I think that's something that we regularly take a look at. It is a challenge that we have, you know, but we made a judgment call with Westfield that we did it inside. Normally, you would go outside. Quite honestly, you would. But it was a judgment call, so sometimes there's that, like I said, that experiential knowledge.
To your question, I guess, you'd have to do a mark, almost like a marketing analysis. How much money are you spending on outside resources versus what a paid engineer at that level would be at, which is probably well over $100,000?
And it becomes a budgetary thing too, because the project work is being paid for out of the capital improvement budget, whereas the staff person will be paid for out of the operating budget. You know, so that becomes the other challenge that we have is, you know, can we afford to add the staff in the operating budget? You know, would I like to have, you know, three or four more people in engineering? Absolutely I would, because there are a lot of projects that other departments come to and say, we need some help, we need some help. I'm like, I don't have anybody to help you, or I got to pull them off of this or that. But, you know, if it's a construction project that's paying for the CAP, the CAP is also paying for the consultant. But, you know, as Trina, you know, has pounded into our head during budget time, you can't use CAP to pay for a staff person.
I guess that is a little bit confusing, because it would seem that if that time is billable for a project, it would seem that you could bill out your internal people. I mean, coming from the legal field, where we had to in-house, you know, compute our billable hours down to the quarter, you know, or tenth of an hour, I guess it's a little different here, but it just seems...
Yeah, our engineering services is not tracked on a, you know, even a, you know, an hourly basis, let alone a quarter hour. The engineering is tracked as, you know, there is a flat percentage of a construction cost. So if a construction project costs $2 million, it's a flat percentage that the CAP pays for those engineering services.
Which is what we do with planning too, right?
Yeah, to a certain degree, yeah, we do. It's a little different, but, but yeah, that's, and that's when I first got here and we really started ramping up stormwater projects. We did add some people to staff, charged it to the stormwater utility to stay out of expenditure restraint limits that we had. Now, as we, and we were doing two projects a year. When we ramped back to one, we reduced the staffing to reflect that. So that was one of the things we did, just to kind of keep pace with that. But that's because our base went, our base ramped up, and then our base ramped down. And those are the kind of analyses that we do on a regular basis to determine if we do go in or outside. But sometimes we just decide we're going to do it in-house, even if it taxes us. And Evoline was a good example, and, because it happened so quickly, the person who designed it was in-house. So we're like, well, we're just going to have that person continue it, but they had to do some quick design.
And while juggling, you know, the start of construction, you know, because our design engineers are also construction project managers. You know, Mayor Steve, as you know, you know, Steve Dittmer designed your street. He spent a lot of time out there during construction, but also had to, you know, while it was getting started, had to work on design for Evoline. So, you know, it's trying to split that time between, you know, managing construction out in the field and trying to get designed on, you know, at the same time, which really starts to tax the system.
And as far as the neighbors knew, it was just a, no complaints. It just went very smoothly.
Happened.
Done very fast, without any complaints from anybody.
Well, Mr. Jordan does this type of class. I think it's a two-day class that Ben does. So you've got a two-day class in two hours.
Oh, thank you.
There'll be a quiz tomorrow.
If there are no further questions, it is after seven o'clock. Ben, thank you. James, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just saying, classes dismissed. I assume you're driving back.